Based on what the four of you have said to this point, so on page one, paragraph two, what we might consider is striking the first paragraph that reads, in general, the committee and the county through its board of commissioners are supportive of the concept, and say something along the lines of, "The county does not support the current national monument proposal due to size, lack of detail on future management, and the below-listed concerns." Period. The county is open to the concept of a special designation in Spring Valley to protect the historic and tribal values in the area while also addressing the county's concerns. So I think what that would do is indicate that there's certainly concern with the proposal as it stands now for the issues that were discussed. And then it also leaves the door open, as Mr. Sanford has suggested, for the county and the tribes to work together towards resolution. Whether that means something that looks slightly different, whether it's more detailed, whether it's boundary adjustments, or quite frankly, in my mind, probably a combination of the three. But I think that would certainly reflect where the commissioners are today in their discussion, and also leave the door open for further, I don't want to say negotiations, but work back and forth.
Engage, yeah.
And then as related to page two, the one thing that I think I pointed out in my overview and that I would come back to is the second line in page two talks about a congressional or administrative process. Quite frankly, in my mind, if we're going to have this discussion back and forth and open the concept of, you know, some sort of land exchange or land disposal, you know, whether it's in Spring Valley or elsewhere, I really think that they should engage our congressional folks. I know the state legislature has a resolution of support, but at this point, I don't believe the county has engaged either Senator or Congressman Amity on this. And I really think they would, you know, be well to be part of the solution. So I might suggest striking for administrative from page two, line two, and simply say that the county is supportive of a congressional process going forward.
And Jeremy, that's exactly what I have on my note, to strike an administrative process. I would like to go ahead and engage this as a congressional. I think that our congressional leaders need to be involved in this also, and this is special. So what does the board think of that dialogue, those changes in regards to being able to have a letter moving this forward? Go ahead, Commissioner.
Again, at the end of the day, the tribes should have some sway on this deal, not Washington DC. And if they're not grandfathered in as having a say, we're back to the NEPA process. We're back to advocacy groups that gosh knows what that'll look like in 10 to 15 years. The Chauchoones, the Gochutes, the tribes that are right here that have a special, special, special feeling towards that piece of ground.
Right.
They should be on top of the heap, and they should have the final say if anything changes. I don't know, and I don't know how we can do that.
Well, right now, that area has a designation as an area of critical.
Yeah, well, and how about right down the street where they're dying like flies because nobody will step up against Southern Nevada Water Authority?
I don't think that... You're absolutely right, but I don't, I don't know. Right now, we're here to discuss this.
I realize that.
And, you know, but I would like to address that, you know, and maybe we can do that in a future time to see what we can do there.
I think to make this, to cut it short, because we are, we can talk till cows come home. I think the number one thing we should do is include the tribes and our local government and the county by designating our district attorney, our county manager to sit down with those, and if they can get hold of the congressional districts and come up with, Jeremy, and come up with a plan that they can bring back us or to all the entities. And we can draft a letter that addresses all these issues or as much as we can without really making a stand one way or the other, but we need to include all the entities, mostly our county officials, because they can come back to us and explain. We can all have our own ideas, and we can all have our own opinions, but in order to draft a letter that's going to be compatible, all the parties have to get together. And that includes congressional, local, and tribes, everybody. And then come back and give us something that we can actually make a vote on. Today, I don't think we can make a vote on anything.
I think that, I think that that's exactly what this letter does.
Well, it's got too many issues with it.
No, no, no. That's addressing the concerns. That's addressing the people that we will be talking about. It's just spelled out. I'm sorry, go ahead.
So the way, the way I see it right now is that this board has three options. Table it, it's a good discussion, wait till the chairman comes back so you can include him in these discussions. Do nothing today, no action. Two, accept the letter as drafted from the National Resource Advisory Committee. Or three, ask Jeremy to repeat the amendment to the letter that he suggested where it says the board does not support the project in its current scope. And that has several other concerns, but it wants to be part, wants to participate in those discussions.
Right. This is insane, yeah.
So I'd ask Jeremy to repeat that language, and then the board could figure out whether it wants to accept the letter as Jeremy suggested with these changes, or if we just want to kick the next meeting and change here and talk about it some more. The thing is, this has gone around and been chewed on enough. You know, I think we know where the tribe's coming from on this. I think that one of the biggest issues here is our distrust of the park service and what would happen when they... The resolution that went through the legislature last year without our input, they specifically said in the resolution that either make it a national monument or expand Great Basin National Park.
Yeah.
So that's what we're looking at right now. And, and, and we have, once it turns over to Great Basin National Park, they do what they want. They don't really include us or care what we have to say. They do what they want.
But it's totally, totally different than, you know, BLM is a multiple use.
Right.
State park mission statement is very different from that, as is the force.
At least we have a seat at the table with BLM.
Yes.
Whether they do what they don't do anyway, but anyway, so I would ask Jeremy to repeat that language, the change of the letter that he's suggesting, that would be my suggestion to consider.
The only problem I have with that is the amended letter is there was a lot of discussion, a lot of things were brought up, and I don't want to do anything on the fly and miss, you know, portions of what different commissioners had said. I think if we want to do a changed letter, it would probably be more efficient to table this, have Jeremy work with the individual commissioners to make sure what they said is included in the letter, and then we can see the actual language on the paper next time around. If we, if we amend it on the fly, it's a concern.
We're only talking about a couple weeks.
It would be the first meeting in February that this would come back.
I don't know why that would be a problem. I so moved we tabled this until first meeting we had in February and have a rewrite and get everybody's input into it.
All right, that works, and then Commissioner Biden will be here then to...
I'll second Hank's motion.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion by Commissioner Vogler, second by Commissioner... Sorry, my mind is getting full. Is there any further discussion?
Yes. Hello?
Yes.
Hello?
I'm sorry, at this time, we're not, we're not taking comments from the public on this item. It isn't for open discussion?
Okay, the land was the Indians before all this.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we are not taking public comment at this time. Thank you.
We have a motion in seconds.
Yes, so any further discussion? All right, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? All right, motion praised and announced. We'll be bringing this back. Jeremy, anything else?
Vice Chair Carson, I just appreciate you and the commission. I know, you know, this is an intricate and difficult conversation just because of the context of what's going on and how important that land is to everyone, and I look forward to continue working with the commission to get this right and set us up for future working with the tribes and our congressional to make sure we get it right for the future of not only the tribes but the county. So I appreciate everyone's thoughtfulness and comments. We'll make some markups and see you next month.
All right, thank you, Jeremy. Okay, let's go ahead and get caught back up then. Thank you so much, appreciate it. And we're not done yet. We're not far from it, so thank you for being here.
And we'll be here next time.
All right, awesome, thank you. Okay, we'll go to, we've got three commissioners, we'll go to C1, our 925 Road Commission Discussion Update on Primary and Secondary Roads Within White Pine County and County Facilities Completed and Future Project Communications with Corporation and Governmental Agency. Martin Trout, Road Superintendent.
Good morning.
Thank you.
So road activities from November 30th through January 12th include road maintenance, standard roads, Long Valley, Cherry Creek Summit, North Beach Valley, North Spring Valley, Birch Road, Coke Road, and Silver Creek Road. Road maintenance for non-standard county roads have included snow removal activities on North Creek, East Creek, Michigan, and Canyon Pine Lane. We're continuing to stockpile material in the North Beach Valley gravel pit for future repairs, and then we've been doing snow plowing and snow removal throughout the entire county per the county's snow removal policies. And we're performing snow removal for the airport, and we've also performed some snow removal on two private roads for emergency services that include law enforcement, the sheriff's department, and then a speed to be able to get out and access emergency situations. We've hauled snow from Mineral Heights Park Street in Ruth Township, which we'll do again. And then the screening plant repairs have been completed, so we're ready to start screening material once the weather breaks, and we're able to do that. An update on minor county road maintenance and right-of-way researches of non-county roads that were prioritized by the commission. We sent an email update on December 15th to the county manager and the DA. We're looking at budgeting for the second priority list of looking at right-of-way issues on the, the roads that were prioritized for a second round. And then would like to set up a future meeting with the DA and the county manager to look at the right-of-way requirements for the county codes and the procedure for the adoption process. Right now, the city of Alios, White Pine County, 117 hours in the county-city assistance agreement, which is a change of zero hours from the last report. Any questions?
Can I just piggyback onto that a little clarification about what we mean by these right-of-ways? We have to have the 60-foot right-of-way in order to adopt it as a road. And if you don't have it, if we do have a 60-foot right-of-way and we're spending fuel tax money developing this into something that we'll adopt, that's all well and good. If we don't have a 60-foot right-of-way, then it's harder to justify spending that fuel tax money. Not that we couldn't still justify it as a development for future adoption, but we really need to clear that up, and that's going to take discussions with private property owners.
Would they be purchase, would we have to purchasing land?
Well, I mean, the property owners came to the county for this adoption, and this is for the benefit of the property owners in that area. So I would, I would hope, we haven't had a lot of discussion yet, but I would hope that it would be a pretty simple process if they want us to adopt these roads, that they would facilitate us to adopting these roads. But we just have to kind of nail that down.
On a related note, hey, Martin, how many private roads do you guys maintain?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
No, that's right, you understand it just fine. We don't maintain private roads, just for the bubble.
Oh, okay. Well, I wasn't sure exactly where you're going. So to clarify that, no, we do not maintain private roads. In an emergency situation, such as this last snowstorm and all the wind we had and whatnot, we did go into a couple of different private roads and plow out the highway patrol officers and one of the county deputies so they, so they could get out to emergency situations.
Wouldn't request it or to bring an ambulance onto the property.
Right, exactly.
And then we'll worry about that later.
And then there has been times in the past that we have plowed a private road and traded off for a safe haven, to park a grader, plug the grader in.
Thank you, Martin.
And for the use of water resources.
That's right.
Which is allowed by NRS.
Yep, the trade.
And also, there are private, the county road goes through a good chunk of private property, and that right-of-way is established, but it's, they don't get to the cattle guard and quit until they get to the other side of the cattle guard on the road that goes south to Baker.
That's all I have, but thank you.
And Martin, people park their grader to keep it off the road so nobody vandalizes it, and they grade about, what, 100 yards of the road going into the house. But the rest of it, we take care of.
Yes, which is covered in the NRS, that that is allowed.
Anything else? This is discussion update. All right, good. Okay, thank you so much, Martin, appreciate it. All right, I will go to item D, our 930 White Pine County School District. Item one, discussion for action, for possible action, approval of resolution 2023-07 in support of school funding and school construction for 2023. Adam Young, White Pine County School District Superintendent.
We have a slideshow up here for you, but I wanted to make sure you have hard copies as well as for your reference. And I do want to thank you for the time. I know that you've got many, many items on your end that are very important. And so I appreciate the opportunity to be here today and...
I'm just going to let these commissioners figure their electronics out real quick.
Sure.
Just don't want you to miss something.
So first of all, I want to say that the versions of this presentation have been provided to our State Board of Education, the statewide council for teacher training, our local city council, the Mel Wheeler Power Board, the Rotary Club, the Lions Club, and the Hospital Board. I am here, of course, as your local superintendent and a hometown kid, but also representing the Nevada Association of School Superintendents as every legislative session, as we prepare to work with our elected bodies, we come together to talk about the things that are needed in every single district, not just the White Pine County School District, not just Clark, Washoe, but all of our school districts. And as I go through this presentation, and it's, I am going to move as quickly as possible understanding that you're behind schedule and just to try to, you know, be really, really efficient with our time. But I think I can categorize what I would like to highlight today into two areas. One is school funding in general, and then that's divided into two areas. And whoops, the second area is school construction, okay? So we'll start with just the area of school funding, and the things that I'd like to kind of highlight today, you can go one more there, Michael, too, is that our state's Board of Education, and this is where I'm looking right now, if you're following along with your hard copy, our state board of education has outlines measurables and ways to quantify measurables in our school districts across the state. So they have this strategic plan, and we as local school districts take those aspirations into account as we build our own performance plans and lay out the different types of things that we want to do. And I just want to highlight that based on those, those plans, there's really been a lot of progress in Nevada. You know, Nevada sometimes has a narrative around public education that's not necessarily a favorable one. But there's a lot of really, really good work that's going on, not just in our local school district, but across the entire state. We all know that COVID was, was a really rough time for everybody. It was challenging for our students. We were just blessed locally to be able to kind of push through most of COVID. We shut down our schools for the minimum amount of time possible, and that was reflected in the way that some of these outcomes are quantified. We saw fewer losses last year, and we saw some really nice gains this year. And across the state, we're seeing progress after that COVID dip. In the three or four years prior to COVID, as a state, we saw really positive trends going forward in the way that the state currently measures student learning. And this is, you know how I said that there are two parts of the school funding thing that I want to talk about? This is part number one. And that part number one is that the way that our system in Nevada is currently set up to define student learning, you can move on there, Michael, you can go one more, too, is, I would say mediocre at best. And let me expand on that a little bit. The way that we quantify student learning in Nevada is based on one test that is administered one time per year, and two, teachers and students do not get the results of that test until early in the next school year. So there's a good six-month gap between the time the students take the test and the time that the teachers get the results and the families get the results so that anything can be done about that. And one of the big parts of our platform as superintendents is to say that we're going to get the outcomes that we expect to get. If, if we believe that high-quality learning is measured by one test, and that's how we're going to define high-quality learning, then we're not going to get what we actually really want. If we want to create rigorous and authentic learning experiences for students, then we need to look as a state at a different way to quantify student learning that's more holistic and that takes into account results that teachers can use immediately to try and provide intervention for the students who are not making the progress that we want to have them make. So there's a lot of different ways that you can do that, and I'll just, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this, but this, in your hard copy, there's a slide that has a bunch of pictures here along with a little bubble, a thought cloud there. This is one of the state board of education's overarching aspirations. And my point here is just the point, it's to really illustrate the disconnect that exists with how we currently quantify student learning and what, in general, our families, our students, and people want. So there's some really great things up here. You see a student in a pre-dental program, you see some ROTC, you see some arts, you see an all-state choir, athletics. These are things that, these are reasons why kids come to school. Kids do not come to school so that they can see whether or not they passed or failed a test at the end of the year. And as we talk about funding, what we're trying to illustrate is that these are the types of programs, they do cost money. And as I work my way to the second part of the school funding issue, what I want to illustrate is Nevada has historically not invested in programs like these that really help our students thrive. Just a quick, a quick example of this, the photo that's up there that has the two students, it's just, it's the second photo to the right. So the first photo on the, on the far left, that's actually in Lund with some of the agriculture and horticulture work that we do out there. But just to the right of that is my colleague, Superintendent Wayne Workman in Lion County School District, and this is in Smith Valley. Students in Smith Valley, they run a turkey farm business, and they, they hatch, you know, they hatch the turkeys, they feed them, they take care of them, they grow them, they sell them for Thanksgiving to community members. Then they go through the butchering process, all of the accounting and, you know, the business end of that as far as taking in the money, communicating, yeah. And, and, and then they even pardon a couple of them before Thanksgiving, you know, just in the spirit of Thanksgiving. That, when you think about that and compare something like that to a test, there's just no comparison. But again, programs like that cost money. The other thing that I just want to highlight is, for example, in our own local Davity Norman School, we have a STEAM Academy there that we launched in 2017 or so, 2018. The only way that we can afford that program is through a competitive grant process where we, we spend about a billion extra dollars per year in that school. If we want programs like that across the board in Nevada, we have to understand that they cost money. We got to pay for them, okay? So that brings me to the, the first parts of what we call as superintendents, our Invest Platform. And you can go one more there, too. And one more. So Invest stands for Investing in Nevada's Education. Again, as I said at the beginning, this is not a new thing. Every legislative session, all 17 superintendents come together to talk about what our priorities are. So there are three different components to Invest, and they're all around school funding. The first component that I just want to kick here is this idea of what I was just talking about, that if we want rigorous and authentic learning experiences for students that actually prepare them for life after high school, we have to look at what our inputs into education are, and our inputs into education as a state are just historically inadequate. So this outlines to superintendents what we feel is necessary just to get us to average to build programs like the ones that I was just describing. That's part one. Part two of the funding issue, if you want to advance there, Michael, and just go one more. So we're going to look at this, a couple of these pie graphs here, and I'll only spend time on just one of these because you'll get the idea. If you have students or young people, or even if you don't, there's been so much discussion about mental health with our, with our adolescents and the toll that COVID took on folks. We, as people who have more life experience, are able to look back on that, and even though it was not very fun, we can say, you know what, it was a short period of time, yes, there are lingering effects, but life is going to go on, and eventually, we're going to be okay. When you're 10 or 11 or 12, you don't have that life experience. And so for youth to work their way out of that funk, we are really seeing the effects of that in our schools. So the second, the second component of Invest is how do we support our students from that social, emotional, and mental health side of things? Because it's really challenging to get high-quality academic learning if students are in a mental space where they're not ready to engage in some of those activities. Does that make sense? So just to highlight up here, this is, this is our own local data here, and you can see that 75%-ish of our students either strongly agree or agree that basically their school is a warm and welcoming environment, and we're really proud of that, but there's 25% of those students who don't feel that way. And the challenge that we have, and this connects back to what I was talking about a little bit before, is that schools have to focus on what they are measured by, and if what you're measured by is one test that kids take at the end of the year, and you have a finite level of resources, then you can only do so much. As you all are well aware, a budget is, it can be very constricting, and if you have to make tough choices, you're going to make the choices about the things that you're measured on. We're not measured on anything with regard to mental health and social, emotional learning. We should be, but we're not. And not only should we be measured on that, but there should be funds that are associated with that so that we can address those needs for students. So that 25% of the kids that you can see that, that don't... So that 25% of the kids that you can see that don't agree with that statement, what districts are left to do is to make really challenging choices about how to meet those needs when the resources are not there to meet those needs. Does that make sense? So advancing to the next slide that looks like this one, right here, yeah, just a couple more there, Michael, one more maybe, one more, there we go. So this, this, again, I'm circling back to INVEST. As your local superintendent and as one of the 17, what do we feel...